Okay, I'll follow this work session. I'll agree with the city council for the order. Let the record reflect it. 432. And the first item on the agenda is water revenue bonds, Phase 2.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So if you guys will remember, in 2024, we issued basically Phase 1 of the water revenue bonds. So what that entailed was, if you'll recall, it entailed the design of a new water treatment plant, the design of an expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, the additional cost for the raw water line, which is about $18 million for that because there were some overages since we did that. So the industrial park project was on that issuance and some other small items just in the distribution system. So all those projects are underway. Obviously, the raw water line, I think, is, I don't know, percentage-wise, Robert, what would you say, raw water line?
Oh, we're about 90%.
90% complete with the raw water line. There's some things that, you know, just checking and things like that. So that project is well underway. We give you an update every month on that one. Industrial Park Project is about to start construction. We awarded that bid a couple months ago, so that's about to start construction, which will help our industrial park. It'll help our wholesale customers, all those, and relieve some bottlenecks that we have there with the Ridgecrest Pump Station and all kinds of things like that, upsizing some lines and things like that. So what the second issuance is, which is what we planned to issue in the quarter one of 2026, was obviously for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant, the construction of the water treatment plant, which is a small addition. So we received a $90 million Texas Water Development Board loan, if you remember that. Right now, cost estimates for that plant are running at about $120 million. So we're in the probably 95% design stage of the water treatment plant. And so I know in order to ensure that we can pay for that, we will need, we would like to issue some additional funding, any kind of contingency. If we do not need that, if it does come to that, which with the way costs are going right now, I think we are going to need it. But we do have some other projects that we could allocate that funding to or pay ourselves back if we needed to from anything like that. So what I'm going to share with you tonight, I've, I will share the projects. We have Steven Adams with Specialized Public Finance that will talk with you about the way we would like to finance that. I also have the superintendents here of those projects, that they have brought these projects forward to me. If you have any specific questions about those projects, we can kind of answer those together if you need to. So we will go ahead and get started. We did set up a meeting with the Water Subcommittee on January 15th of 2026 to kind of go over this in case there was any technical questions, get a little further in the weeds if we need to. So if you guys feel you have any additional questions based on that. So going through current water treatment plant upgrades. So if you guys will remember, they have used, they've been on a tour, if you'll remember, the two and a half million gallon tank that was behind the filters, looked a little rusty, still looks a little rusty. It's, we have divers that should inspect that, but they will not inspect it because it's, it's structurally not stable. The main reason why it is that way is because when it was built, there was not proper ventilation, so there's a lot of rust in that tank. So we would like to just replace that tank altogether. So that would give us, so right now, we service the whole entire city of Greenville through a 1 million gallon ground storage that we run through that. So if we could do this 2 million gallon, that would just increase and help our capacity issue if we ever got to, because then we would have 3.5 million be able to do that. We would most likely, I know that location, you can see that little blue area in the back there, that's the tank we're talking about. We'd most likely, we haven't done a study on this, but that's part of the design if we do get this. We'd most likely move it out to where the other brand-new tank is that was built about six years ago, put it out there and make sure we can work with that tank. And we'd have to make sure hydraulically, all that can work together. Robert would like to dredge the sledge pond. That's just something that has never been done. Yeah, and he's been here 18 years. So, you know, obviously, that's thing, those things kind of build up and things like that. So it'd be, it'd be a wet dredge, so that's why it seems a little bit more expensive at $3 million. And then what you're looking at is the current basins that we utilize, you guys, that, you know, those are the ones that we can walk up on, on top of, and the water goes through, it's processed as it comes in from the raw water line, or, I'm sorry, from the reservoirs, and it comes in. And then, you know, by the end of it, it looks like you can swim in it. The beginning, it doesn't really look like you want to swim in it, but by the time, by the time you get to the end, it looks like you could swim in it if you wanted to. We'd like to rehab those. There's a lot of cracks in those. They're probably, I don't know, were they original to the plant?
Ninety-one.
Yeah, 91 when they were built. I think the plant opened in 94, correct?
Well, the rehab part, and there wasn't a lot of foundation work that was done when they built that, so that's what we did find out.
So we would like to rehab those currently and then also, also add an additional sedimentation basin, which could be just to the, I guess it would be the north of those. South, okay, we'd add them to the south of that. And then, so that would be roughly around $30 million to be able to rehab those. Obviously, you can't take both of those down, so you would have to figure out with the engineers systematically how to take those down, because the water has to go through those basins in order to be treated and then go into the filters. So that's kind of the, that's the current water treatment plant upgrades that we would like to, this would help anything, you know, the south treatment plant's going to help anything on the south side of town, once we get that built. But this would help just enhance everything on the north side of town, as well as our industrial side of town and our wholesale customers. So it would just enhance the capacity of everything, the efficiency of running everything through that north, that north plant. The next, obviously, is going to be the new water treatment plant. That's just a location of where it's going to be at. It's going to be in that very far southern, in this picture, the southern portion down there, where it's kind of, there's not a lot of trees. That's the best hydraulically that the engineers, like I said, this is probably 95% design. We're really close to going out to bid for this one. Really just TCQ, I think, we may be waiting on TCQ and also waiting on Texas Water Development Board to approve all those. That just takes some times, reviewing plans, making sure everything's good before they issue us that money. Obviously, we still are estimated to have completion by 2028 if we can get through the Texas Water Development Board. So this is just the $40 million on top of the $90 million that Texas Water Development Board has given us. So that would give us about 130 to be able to build that plant, which, like I said, the estimates right now are in the $120 million range. Until that goes out to bid, we really don't know what that's going to be, but we don't want to sell ourselves short initially. Obviously, you guys know why we need a new plant. We've got currently 14,000 meters. Our current plant is only rated at 14 MGD, so we're at 85, you know, 85%. We must admit something, which obviously, we have the plans for that. We're building a new 12 million gallon plant, so we should be good there. So that's just a reminder of why we need that new plant. And then wastewater treatment plant, this is the 46 million, 78250 is the construction part of that expansion. So what that will do, you see those blue kind of boxes or rectangles there? That's going to be the new 12 million gallon AGSSBR addition. So we'll have, we'll be able to treat 12 million gallons on that side, and then the current ones, we can treat 6 million gallons, and so that would allow us to treat 18 million gallons. Eventually, in the future, after we get this done, we would like to convert those basins to the new technology as well. So you'd have a 12 and a 12, we'd be able to treat 24, so that would match pretty closely with what we can treat water-wise, which would be 14 and 12 is 26. So that would get us there. That's just some, this is actually really close to going out to bid as well. So the next couple of months, we should be able to see in that. We're going to do the demo package, all the addition, everything like that is going to come in the next couple of months. So we're getting very close to the design on that as well. Obviously, same kind of rules there. You get to 75% at TCQ, so we're there, 90% permit rule. You've got to start engineering, which that's what we're doing. You guys have been gracious enough to allow us to start that process so that we can do this at today's prices, instead of when we actually are reacting and get to the 90%, where you have to do it and you're required to do it. You don't have a choice. So just a lot of additions and some upgrades out there at the wastewater treatment, which is going to be really close to the new wastewater, or, I'm sorry, new water treatment plant, which is just going to be to the south of there. So all of that's going to be in that 600 acres, so it's going to be very beneficial for the city. And then, in addition, if you'll see, this is, this line, it's kind of a little, that orange, I guess, yellowish line there, that's going to be what we're calling the east tran, east loop transmission main. You'll see it runs all the way from the reservoirs all the way down to the airport. So that's basically feeds our entire city. If you guys remember, that 20-inch line busted a couple of, couple of dunes ago, knock on wood, a couple of dunes ago, that really knocked out the majority part of our city. And so what we'd like to do, we would like to do with this one, we have, Phase 1 is getting completed, because you guys approved that in the original bond. We'd like to finish that Phase 2 through 7, which is additional $10 million. And what we'd like to do with that one is make this a fused pipe. So anything that has to do with transmission, any of the main lines, we'd like to make those fused. So we don't have any valves, we don't have any breaking points. When the ground shifts, it's going to shift, similar to the raw water line. So we'd, anything with the transmission, I've told these guys, let's bring to them and, and make sure that it would be fused, because it is a main transmission line, we don't have to worry about it. I think we had to, anytime we have to fix any of the old lines or, you know, do any isolations or anything like that, it runs in the, it's no less than $50,000 to fix those, those ones that our guys cannot work on, and we have to contract those out. So it's, it's usually under emergency situations, so it gets really expensive really fast. So just so you know. So that's one of the main ones. Here's reservoir, we're calling reservoir number seven. You guys allowed us to start the design process for that, so that's actually under design, going well. We've submitted the permit. I think it's going to go through quicker than, than anticipated. We don't want to call it a lake or anything like that, because then that gets into a different realm of the world. But this would also go on that 600 acres near the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant, so that would just be another source of water. We would hold probably as much water as our current reservoirs, but from a surface area-wise, it wouldn't be as large. It'd be just a little bit deeper, so we could hold the same amount of water to be treated, things like that. So if we do include that, that's probably, we're estimating right now at about $70 million to actually build that reservoir. And then, here's a whole listing of what I just called utility projects. They're all either water or sewer. There is a skater lift station in there. And then, in the very bottom, we do, are asking for a wastewater collection system model. Right now, we don't have that model, so we did a water, water system, our water distribution system model before we started doing all these water projects. Just kind of let us know what we need from an upsizing point, if growth happens, you know, you need to do this, if it's old, you need to replace this, those kind of things. So it kind of gives you basically a guideline of where you need to, you know, prioritize where your money's going to go. So it's really just a model to, to help us to be able to replace things. Obviously, those things that we're already asking to replace are, we know are old, we know they need to be replaced, but from a growth standpoint, you know, to be able to grow in the future, we really need that model to help us do that. So there's, you know, there's a 21-inch Splash Kingdom trunk main in there. You've got Division Street, Walworth, and Park Street. Park Street, those are our older side of town. All of these that we're asking here are replacements. There's nothing new here. So this is just all replacing either, I guess you could call them problematic lines that we've had in the past, where our guys spend a lot of time in those areas, or those areas are growing, we're having to push a lot more through those areas. And so that's really, it's mostly replacements. I won't say it's all replacements, but it's all, nothing that's new that's going anywhere. So, you have a question?
You got a question?
Okay.
So for some of these that are being, that would be replaced, would we maybe also include dropping them a little lower? Because I know some of these areas have poor sewer fall.
I don't know. You want to talk about that?
Okay, so.
You can come up here. So you can address them.
So as far as the sewer fall, that'll be evaluated. We can sit there and take measurements of the depths and see if they need to be regraded. And also, part of that system model would also be something that investigates that as far as I and I, things like that. But the, the ones that are on here for Park Street, Division, Walworth, that would be all pipe burst. So that's just basically pulling a new pipe through the old pipe. But yes, that, that will be evaluated in the system model.
Okay, great, thanks.
And then too, in those, just to think about, in those older part of towns too, you also have a lot of other utilities crammed in those right-of-ways with the smaller streets too. So that's something we'll have to evaluate, that's probably hasn't been looked at in a really long time too. So, yeah, so, I mean, from a depth perspective, you know, that, that's something we would need to pay attention to, definitely. Let's go. And then, this is going to be the 36 raw water loop from the south water treatment plant to the north water treatment plant. So we're estimating, you guys have approved the purchase of the pipe for that. This would be for the construction of that. So this would be connecting that 6.99 miles, construction 24 months. We would probably, we obviously have to bid that out, but we do have, I think, MH Civil is finishing up all the, the smaller connections that you guys had approved, and so this would just be for the construction of that. And then, this is an option. We've talked about it several times. I know the last time that we sent council onto the tour, we toured the service center, so you guys know what kind of condition the service center is in. So if you'll remember, so this, this picture here where the, in the blue, where the, the round, the green circles are, that's where the industrial park project's going. So that's the four, the four acres that we bought behind 6,000 industrial that we're going to utilize. That's where our elevated storage tanks are going to go, our ground storage tanks are going to go. And so we talked about possibly either purchasing the remainder of that front piece of that property, turning that into a service center if we'd like to. So that's an option. We put it in here. I put in 6 million for the purchase of land. What that would be at this point, I don't know. It's been, been some time since I last explored that option back in 2024. And then, we put about an estimated 14 million to rehab that current building, which it's a, currently, it's a warehouse. So that's something that could fit pretty perfectly with what we're doing. So we would assume if we, if, if council did choose this option, that we could complete that by 2028 if we needed to. And then, so how much total? That's a lot of information thrown at you. You guys do have a spreadsheet in front of you, that there's your totals of all that together. So total without the Public Works Service Center option is 245 million, 740,550. Add that 20 million in there, so that's 265 million, 740,550 total, all of that together. So that includes the water treatment plant wastewater, the old plant upgrades, and all the information, you know, whether it's either east transmission name for water, that includes the reservoir. I think when, I'll bring Steven Adams up here in a minute, and he can talk to you about, he did do an option to fund that without the reservoir in it, if that's something that the council wanted to wait. But I'll let him walk through that with you from a standpoint. How can we fund it? We will, during the course of this, we are currently, we are going to ask our new gen strategies to update our water rate study. Obviously, we've added some information since they last did it in 2022, so we'd like to talk with them about what we need to do for going forward with fall of, or, I'm sorry, fiscal year of 2027 and '28 and beyond. And so we will talk to them about that. The new rates would be determined with acceleration in CIP. All factors that are known right now, at this point in time, it would be an estimated 9.23 increase in October of 2026. And what that looks like, if you guys can see, if you'll look up their minimum bill with, with your, without consumption, is we are currently at that 64.03. I confirmed that with my own personal utility bill today. So base water is at $36.63, and then base sewer is at 27.40. So we would just move over, and for the fiscal year, that's fiscal year of 2027, which would start October of 2026, we'd move to that $40.42 for the base water and then 29.52 for the sewer. So that's where your increase from 64.03 to 69.94 would jump, that's that 9.2, 2.3% increase. So right now, that's what we would, we would plan. That would give us enough, if you will look at this next slide, down there in the bottom where that capital is in 2027, with that 18.8, with the additional debt service, the existing debt service, and then utility CIP funding. The way Steven and Paul have looked at this, we would be, we would be fine with what we have right now. Now going into fiscal year '28 and '29, we'd have to adjust that a little bit, because obviously, the debt service goes up from there, which you'll see when Steven gives you that. So we'd have to work with '28, '29, but I feel confident in fiscal year 2027 that we would be, we'd have enough in there to cover it with the rates that we have projected since 2022, if that makes sense. Okay. Steven, you ready? I'll let him come explain the finances of.
Can I ask one question before we switch over? When would that wastewater collection study be done?
Oh, how long would that take? Yeah, probably about 12 months.
Wouldn't we want to finish that before we do all the calculation? Like you're saying, these numbers are based on everything we know today, but wouldn't we want to do that first, before we drop a quarter billion dollars?
Uh, not really, because the wastewater's just for sewer. So. So anything that we're doing, um, you know, the majority of it is obviously water, which we already did that model. Um, so with the wastewater treatment, I mean, the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, we already know we're at capacity. We don't need a model to tell us that. So we're already at that point. And obviously, if we build a new water treatment plant, we're definitely gonna be over capacity at our current plant. So that's the majority of it. Um, now some of the other items, you know, that John, um, that's why Stephen's got them based on what the timeline is. So you'll see, he's got it stair stepped. So we will issue, you know, some in 2026 to cover what we know right now. Do that hydraulic study, and then '27 and '28. Then it'll, it'll step it out and phase it out basically, so that we will know those items before we do anything drastic with sewer.
So we'll kinda discover as we go on that, and we're, and we're pulling the water stuff up front as opposed to the sewer?
Yes, yeah, cuz we know that right now. So the, the items that we do know right now, that let's say, okay, we've got an 8-inch line there. We know we need a 24-inch right now or for anything in the future. We, we've got that model already, already handled. But we don't have that on the sewer side. That's something that we've just never done, uh, prior to this. So that's, there, there are some sewer items on here. Um, but those are in areas, you know, like on Park Street. There's nobody to build new houses on Park Street.
You know what your usage is. You just gotta fix the lines.
Yeah, we just gotta fix the lines on those. So that's why, kinda why we prioritize those over anything upsizing or new. Um, we already know the one in front of Splash Kingdom needs to be upsized. We know that right now at this point, cuz it's over capacity. We don't- can tell us, okay, you know, or verify, yeah, or verify kinda what we're doing. So that's kinda how we're looking at it, so.
Okay.
But that might make a little bit more sense once Stephen kinda tells you how it goes in line.
Okay, thank you. I can figure this out. Okay, so what, what we did, again, Stephen Adams with Specialized Public Finance. We take all the project numbers that Summer just went over, and we asked the first question, when do you need the money and how much do you need? And then we, they, uh, her departments and her staff help us put together schedule like the one you see on the screen, which is all the projects she just discussed on the, we have it broken out by when you need the money. So this is a three-year debt plan. The first debt issuance that we have planned is for projects of 52,610,000. And I would like to point out that there is 20 million in there for the public, public work center. So, uh, we'll go through the calendar in a minute, but we will need to decide before we sell these bonds if, in fact, that is gonna be in this bond issue and part of the capital plan. The next thing I'd like to point out is on the third 2028 bond issue, we do have $70 million for the, uh, reservoir number seven. Without that reservoir number seven, this is a, uh, 195 million dollar total capital plan rather than a 265 million. So that's, that's the difference in the size if you add the reservoir number seven. And, and here you can see that, um, scenario number one is, uh, 265,740 million to all projects. That includes, uh, reservoir number seven. And scenario, scenario number two, we took that out. So it's roughly 195,740,000. On all of these, we ran the interest rates at what was at that time a current rate, uh, plus 25 basis points. Now, any Water Development Board funding we get will be lower than this by at least one and a half basis points. So let's say we get that, the 40 million that Summer was talking about, that debt would be at roughly three and a half or 3.6%. So everything that we do will help with the rates in, in the out years where we know we're gonna have, uh, more rate increases that Summer was talking about. We also are selling all these bonds with 10-year call or shorter, if we can get away with it. That'll help us to either refinance for savings or if we need to restructure to move some debt out or pay debt off early if in fact you have, um, have extra funds coming in after this, after we get through all this capital improvements. Now, you know, these capital improvements, the way I understand it, are the bulk of the capital improvements that this utility will need for a number of years. So we're taking a lot of debt on right now. These projects are gonna last a lot longer than this debt. And, you know, we're, we're meeting, uh, a situation where we've probably got a little bit behind on some of these projects, but the growth has just exploded, as you know. And so hopefully by doing all these now with all these studies we're having, this will, at least for large water and sewer debt projects, take the city far into the future. Um, this is the debt service in scenario one. I have it graphed, but just like to point out that the total debt service would be just over 32 million dollars for a number of years. And here that is graphically. The gray on the bottom is where you are now. So it's a pretty significant increase in your debt. But like I said, these are projects that are probably gonna last much, much further than the debt. And also, this is a 100% market scenario, and we're going to use as much Water Development Board debt as we, as, as they'll buy, as much as they'll buy. So we're hoping that, um, this will get lower as, in terms of total debt service. Um, as a, an example of scenario number two, that's about 27 and a half million. So you see the 30 million line. It's a little bit below that as total debt service, about $5 million, which is roughly the debt service on this 70 million dollars for the, um, reservoir number seven. Now, my understanding is if you don't do it now, you're just pushing that out because you're gonna have to do it at some point. So the question becomes, do you do it now or do you push it out? And I think what, the reason we have it in is because the inflation rate on projects is a lot higher than, than the cost of the debt. So there is some thought that you should just do everything now or it's simply just gonna cost more and more dollars in, in the future. Uh, we have all the sources and uses. The only thing to point out there, the actual debt is more than the projects because we do have to, um, we do have to add, um, cost of issuance. The other thing I wanna point out, we've changed the covenants over the years. And one of the things we've changed is if we sell on the market, we don't have to have a debt service reserve fund. That's about 8% more in terms of debt. And the only reason I mention that, the Water Board does require a debt service reserve fund. So we could actually sell larger amounts of debt to them, but that reserve fund sits there and earns interest, and we use it to make the last payment on those bonds. So while you sell more debt, you have that cash invested for the whole time, and then it pays itself off in the last bond issue. So it's a financial neutral, um, but you do have to have it to get that low interest money. That's just part of the rules of going to the Water Board. Uh, the next thing, just looking at the timing that we currently have for the first issuance, we, we have the meeting today where we're talking to the council. We'll, between now and when we're receiving our ratings, if there's any more input that we need from the council, we'll get all of that input. Uh, we'll have to receive a rating, and we'll, um, hopefully get that rating in early March. And then on March the 21st, 24th, which is a regular council date, we'll take competitive bids that morning, compile all the legal documents and the winning bids and all the numbers, and bring an offer to purchase bonds that evening to the city council. Once that's done, we'll deliver in mid-April or April the 23rd, once the Attorney General approves all the documents. Uh, one thing I would like to point out, in 2024, you know, we, we were planning for this. When you're planning for debt, you have to think far in advance of where you are. We had covenants that were in place at the time that had the additional bonds test on the top, which basically said you had to have rates in place last fiscal year to be 1.25 times your current debt and your future debt. What this would have done, it would have moved your rate increases well before you can sell the debt. So we changed covenants. We had the opportunity to refund all of your outstanding debt, change the covenants, and we sold it to the Water Board with these same covenants as well, and we got it rated, the same rating. But what, what the bottom says is that you can do a projection of what your revenues will be, and, and we'll use that NewGen study to do this, the rate study from NewGen, to meet that additional bonds test. So you don't have to do your rate increases a year or a year and a half before you sell the debt. And so that's something that, uh, we will take advantage of and, and will be very helpful in this instance. Now, what we do with all of our debt, whether we go to the Water Board or anything else, we work with NewGen, we give them the debt structures, and then they work that into their models along with operating costs and everything else. And so that's where your rate studies come from. And so the more we can lower the interest rate by going to the Water Development Board, you know, the, the lower those future rate increases will be. Um, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
Yeah, so one, one thing on, on the regular agenda, there is a reimbursement resolution. I think it's 8A. I can't really remember the number. But anyway, what that is all about is if, if the city needs to start spending money prior to having debt delivered, in order to have bond proceeds pay back the city for those construction dollars that were spent, we have to do this reimbursement resolution. It's a requirement of the IRS for issuing tactics in bonds. They, they make you tell them through this resolution that you could possibly spend money before you close the bonds. Otherwise, you can't reimburse those bonds back to wherever you got the money, whichever fund you got it from. And so that's one of your agenda items tonight.
I mean, anything that we would spend prior to would be design, survey, land acquisition, you know, things that we already know, um, that we would possibly spend, um, before we get that on April 23rd, which is, what, three months away? So just, you know, anything that, that would just allow us to reimburse ourselves. Now, do I see us spending 52 million before then? No. But that's the number that they suggested from our bond council, just to cover anything, just in case, so. That's correct. That's correct. Okay, I don't have any problem doing that.
And just a quick question, so I'll make sure the funding for these bonds is come out of any ability rates?
That's correct. Yeah, and that's the original plan. So the original plan that we had back when we started this and the original water rate study in 2022, we'll stick with that for fiscal year of 20, uh, October, fiscal year '27, which will start October of 2026, if that makes sense. And then we are going to, in the middle of this process, during this, this year, we will, uh, Ben's already reached out to NewGen, hey, we've got these updated projects, because I know the reservoir wasn't on the original in 2022, so that's not something. I mean, we thought about it, but we didn't think it would happen this quickly. So we need to include that on that CIP list, which they, uh, plug into their formula and able to say, okay, yeah, you're good here. They'll look at our last audited, everything that we brought in. Obviously, we're, you know, we did the AMI meters, which could change revenues and things. So there's a lot of things that could change, and so we want them to update that so that we know what we can do going year in fiscal year, uh, '28, '29, '30, and going forward to make sure our water rates will cover that debt. Cuz if you'll, if you looked at Stephen's schedule, that debt drastically increases, um, in the '28, '29, and '30 years because of the way he structured it. So, um, what we have right now in place is, is, uh, we'll cover that, but going forward in '28, '29, '30, it, it will not, uh, for what we'd like to do.
Because it's been a while since I've looked at that rates, that, um, it is increases, will still be competitive with markets?
As far as I know, yes, um, cuz the last time you guys saw that, um, there was, um, those cities were doing the same thing we were doing, so we did jump to the middle of the pack. But I think those, that, the, the standard changed, so that line jumped up a little bit more. Um, and that's what we can have Chris come back, um, and do another study, just so you guys are aware where we're at at this point. Because I think the last time we talked about it, that was, it was before October. So we knew where we wanted to go, but we didn't know where the other folks were headed.
And you need to, you would come back?
Yes, mhm, yeah, so we do need to have Chris come back and look at that, and we can do that. Um, and we'll ask him to do that, um, before you guys make a decision, um, in October or, or before October. Obviously, we could do it during the budget process, or even sooner. We could do it before then. So I think we'll start budget presentations, uh, in May, so we could have him come before then if you wanted, if you'd like to, um, if he has an idea. But it'll, obviously, that, that, that pull, that, that pull's gonna move again, October of '26, you know? So, so we're always playing that game. So yes, we can certainly have Chris come back and do that, and then, um, but yes, where we stand right now, Philip, we were, we jumped up to about the middle competitively with surrounding cities. Not necessarily comparison. We had our comparison and our competitive on there, but it was all the kind of the surrounding cities of who were competing with, with water, if, if that makes sense. So, okay. We don't know that yet. That's something, that's something we'd need to look at. Um, yeah, so we don't, I mean, we haven't looked at that building, cuz obviously it's not ours. Um, so that's something we'd need to explore further and look into it and to see which would be, um, the best, best value for the dollars, to see if it would be. Um, that building is in, from what, I haven't physically seen it, but what they, it's in great shape. Um, it's not, you know, it's not anything, and it's already kinda set up the way we would, the way we would use it. We'd have to do some minor modifications, but it wouldn't be a, you know, like a total rebuild. Um, so that's something we'd have to look at. I wouldn't wanna just say, yeah, that's the best option. We'd need to look at it. So we'd need to, um, you know, engage somebody to help us with that process. So, yeah, definitely. Probably, but I don't know. That was three years ago too, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna undershoot it and not have enough, uh, you know? But we could, I mean, that's 20 million total, so wherever we needed to, we, we need to look, okay. Let's just say the land costs three to four million. Um, like you said, would it be better to just tear it down and build new? I don't know. I mean, new construction's pretty expensive, as you guys are well aware with the new things that we're building. So it, you know, if it's already, you know, there, then maybe it might be a little bit, uh, a little more bang for our buck. I know, that's a lot of information, so if you have any questions after this, you know, obviously, call, email. I'll be happy to answer, and I can get these guys engaged too if we need to, or if we need to have another water subcommittee meeting, just so you guys, uh, understand completely what we're getting into, cuz I know it is a big ask. Um, but I will say it's not anything that we don't need. Um, it's not anything new, uh, with the exception of the water treatment plant. Um, it's just kind of allocating some to older infrastructure as well as trying to, uh, balance, making sure we have it for growth too. So, um, that's really kinda what we're asking for. Mhm, thank y'all.
Maybe?
Okay, I'll call this meeting the Greenville City Council, but we're gonna let the record reflect that it's about 6:08. And I'll ask our library director, John Hayden, to come after the indication. Please stand and then move your head here. Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear God, we want to thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this evening. Thank you for this weather, the sunshine, Father, to fill it, Father, that all you bless us with, and to be outside in this cool weather, Father, and this nice weather. We just want to thank you so much for that. We had the city council tonight and the mayor tonight, Father, and just thank you for their willingness to be here, Father, the willingness to make the decisions, to give them the wisdom and give them the direction they need as they make tough decisions sometimes. And Father, also be with their families, Father, and bless their families and help them and just protect them, Father. And we just thank you so much for their service and their leadership for this city. Be with the city departments, Father, be with the city manager, Father, and thank you so much for Summer and all she does for the city and all the city departments and leadership. And we want to thank you for the streets and the fleet and the facilities, all they did through this ice storm. And thank you so much for them and just getting it being out there and the weather, Father, and willing to, you know, clean off parking lots like the library and other parking lots, their willingness to do that. And thank you so much for that in their lives. Thank you for the cheerleaders tonight from Greenville Christian. Thank you for that school and being part of our community and what they do is to glorify you and help us all glorify you with our lives and our talents and just help us be more like you. We just thank you so much for everything you do for us, all the blessings you give us as friends and family, and the breath we breathe. It's just name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hayden, please be seated. We have some presentations tonight. I'd like the cheerleader from Greenville Christian School to come up. Yeah, if you want to come up and gather around and if you want to, a lot of you, but we can handle that. So circle around here some way. Maybe we can all get together here. It's okay.
You're shorter than the guy in the front of the year, yes?
It's okay. You can come in a little bit if you want to.
Okay, I have a proclamation, a certificate of recognition presented to the Greenville Christian School Varsity Cheer Team. The city of Greenville proudly recognizes and congratulates the Greenville Christian School Varsity Cheer Team for their outstanding achievement at the TAP State Cheer Competition held in Waco, Texas. On Tuesday, the varsity cheer team earned first place in the 1A, 3A Division V and received a superior rating, securing a state championship title for the second time in three years. This remarkable accomplishment reflects the team's exceptional talent, discipline, teamwork, and unwavering commitment to excellence. The city of Greenville also extends special recognition to the following individuals for their distinguished honors at the state level. Ellie Lowe, where's Ellie? Is she here tonight?
She's not here.
Huh? Oh, okay, okay. Well, she was third place state mascot. Sadie Witt, is she here, maybe? That's you, okay. Well, she was first team All-State, so anyway. Elizabeth Galen, is she here? Where is she? Okay, good. Congratulations, you were first team All-State. Chloe Montenegro, you, okay, second team All-State. Addie Pope, All-State Honorable Mention. So congratulations to your individual achievements. This championship achievement and individual recognition are a testament to the hard work, dedication, and leadership of the student athletes and their coaches. The Greenville Christian School Varsity Cheer Team has brought great pride to their school and to the Greenville community. So congratulations on this exceptional season and well-earned state championship. Congratulations. Remember, we have individual certificates for a number of you, so we'll get those. And I'll give this to you if you want to. Is that okay? So, do you want to say anything?
Um, it was a great season.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Yeah, and congratulations. Do you want to say something?
Oh, no. Oh, and thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're very honored for this. So it's a great school and we appreciate it. it. So, thank you very much.
Mayor, can we have a picture with you and the coaches and the team?
Absolutely.
You've got to get two lines. Two lines.
Can we get... Watch kind of... Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, I have a presentation for the 2025 Achievement of Library Excellence Award. John, you want to come up and introduce this? Do you have any of your staff here?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good. Okay, good. Okay. Okay. Whereas public libraries play a vital role in the education, recreation, and empowerment of local communities, and whereas each year the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association confers the Achievement of Library Excellence Award for Outstanding Contributions to Public Libraries in Texas. Whereas applicants must exhibit excellence by providing services to underserved and special populations, marketing in innovative ways, pursuing collaborative efforts, continually enhancing its services, supporting literacy, digital inclusion, and workforce development, providing cultural, topical, and educational programming, and comprehensively training its staff. Whereas the 516 library systems in Texas, only 101 are earned this year's award. With this honor, our library is the top 20% of public libraries in the state. And I think you received this for the 18th consecutive year. Is that right? That's not included in this proclamation, but I wanted to mention that. Whereas the Wallworth Harrison Library has met requirements of excellence and been awarded the 2025 Texas Municipal Library Directors Association Achievement of Library Excellence Award, and now therefore on behalf of the Greenville City Council, we hereby congratulate the library staff, all of you, for the job well done. Thank you very much, and we're very, very proud of the library.
My photographer. That's a library model photographer. Thank you very much.
To the library model.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
There's so many, I don't know how many different programs you offer, John. Probably 100 different programs the library maybe every year, least. It's amazing. I wish our citizens knew about all of them and take advantage of them. But it's a really great job you do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, now, we have a certificate of recognition for the Greenville Street Traffic Fleet Building Maintenance Department crew. If guys like to come up, if you would please. recent winter storm and ice event impacting our community. During hazardous conditions, crew members worked diligently to sand critical public safety locations throughout the city, including the fire station, police station, Hunt Regional Medical Center, and AMR ambulance stations, ensuring the emergency personnel could safely respond to calls, and that citizens could continue to receive vital services. Your professionalism, teamwork, and willingness to serve under challenging circumstances reflect great credit on yourselves and your department and the city of Greenville. Your efforts help protect lives, maintain essential operations, and demonstrate the spirit of public service that keeps our community strong. The city of Greenville extends its sincere appreciation and gratitude for your outstanding work and continued dedication to the citizens we serve. And thank you very much. That was a, that was a really, really unusual ice storm, because usually we have storms, and it melts, and it goes away the next day. I had white ice on my patio for eight days. So, I mean, I can just imagine what you dealt with. So, thank you very much for all your effort. I know a lot of it was difficult, and we certainly appreciate it. So, thank you. Here's your certificate. I think we'll have some framed certificates for you later. Yeah.
There you go. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll call your attention to two place holders in the agenda. Citizens to be heard in public testimony. Citizens who are to be heard or invited to address the council on topics that are not already scheduled for a public hearing are listed on the agenda. Public testimony is for citizens to address the council on topics that are on the agenda, starting tonight with ordinances, item 7A. If you'd like to address the council on any of these issues, please present a citizen's comment card to the city secretary. Are there citizens tonight?
I have one. John Kelso.
Okay.
John Kelso, 6005 Horn Drive, Greenville. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing us to speak. I'm going to, well, you know, seven or eight years ago, Mayor Droling at the time kind of accused me of only wanting zoning that was planned development in the city. And I denied that at the time. I said, no, I believe there's a time and place for everything. But here, eight years, seven, eight years later, I'm almost, I want to take that back and think maybe it is the only appropriate zoning plan development. Reason I say that is I want to read a quote out of the Greenville Forward Comprehensive Plan. "The city's existing zoning ordinance dictates that for multifamily, any structure may only have a maximum density of 24 units per acre. To avoid dense residential development that is out of scale, it is recommended that Greenville reduce the maximum allowable units to 18 acres per acre." This for multifamily. So, why do I think planned development might be the most appropriate for everything? Anytime you make a zoning change to multifamily, it sounds to me like you're authorizing that person to go up to 24 units per acre. They may have a plan for a lot less than that, but you're giving them authorization and free rein to go ahead and take it to the max, 24 units per acre, when the recommendation is we should try to limit them to 18. So, even if, even if you try to ask them, hey, we're on multifamily, we approve it, but we sure wish you'd only have 10 units per acre, 18 units per acre. And they might say, yeah, we'll try to do that. But you're giving them authorization to go right to the max. Maybe we need more than one. Maybe we need like an MF1 that's 24 units per acre, or an MF2 that's 18, an MF3 that's only two-story structures, no three stories, something like that. Might be something to think about for, you know, future categories of multifamily. But I just, you need, I wish you'd be careful. If you do a PD for everything, then you're forcing them to do what you want with the, because they have to come to you and show you the plan, and they agree to the plan. When you just go multifamily, they can do anything they want up to 24. That's, that's the way it looks like it's written. Anyway, things to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. Are there other citizens? Okay, there are no public hearings tonight. Go to item 7A, ordinances. Consideration and action on ordinance offering a special election on proposed amendments to the Home Rule Charter of the city of Greenville. Daniel?
All right. What you've got in front of you right now is about a 14-page ordinance. The first seven pages are the general ordinance that would call the election. It includes all the dates of voting and early voting. If you approve moving forward with any of the six proposed ballot items, this would be, the second part of this, which is attached as Attachment A and Attachment B, would be, the final wording of that would be translated into Spanish and then given to the elections administrator over at the county sometime in the next couple of days. There's a deadline, I think, two days from now, or actually three days from now, on the 13th, for elections for the general election day in May. That's when this would come up on the ballot. So, basically, charter city or home rule cities that have a charter get to create their own law, subject to the vote of the people within the city. Every two years, the city has an opportunity to amend the charter to do certain things. In this case, there's six different things that I've suggested that the council look at, either to come in line with state law, or to get closer to the status quo for other cities of about our size, and with our general position about 50 miles away from a major urban center. And I'm going to go over these one at a time and answer any questions that the council might have. If you go back to Exhibit, our Attachment A and B, Attachment A goes into great detail about what the charter currently says, and has listed out verbatim wording of each individual section of the six that we're talking about. And then beneath that, there's a section that shows what the proposed change is as far as how it would appear in the actual charter itself. And the first one, for instance, strikes out two words and adds seven other words. The biggest reason for this is that over the past three legislative sessions, there've been a lot of changes related to city law. And most of these changes relate to those administrative and legislative changes to codes, and then administrative code language that was set up by state-level agencies that were charged with writing certain laws. And so, as we go through here, I'll show, or I'll tell you what the change, proposed change for the ballot is, and then the language that will be on the ballot itself. The first one is Proposition A, and that's the change Article 2, Section 7. And that, the title of that section is Extension of City Limits by City Council. The legislature has dramatically changed cities' abilities to annex property. No longer can cities unilaterally just go out and say, you're now part of the city, for anything within the ETJ, which is the extraterritorial jurisdiction around the city. Now, people have to request that they be annexed. And so, this change is, initially, the charter said with or without consent, and we're striking the words "or without," and then adding another section down at the bottom so that we don't have to change this charter section again in two years after the next legislative session. Now it says "or otherwise allowed by state law," which will allow the city basically to just do whatever state law says without having to go back and change the charter every two years. So, the proposition language would basically, basically says that section of the charter, should it be amended to clarify the council's authority under state law to fix the city's boundary limits and annex territory adjacent to the city, only with the consent of the territory and inhabitants to be annexed, or is otherwise allowed by state law. So, the, the final ballot itself is not going to be very long. All of the rest of this is to comply with the elections code that requires an exhaustive set of wording to show exactly what's going to be changed, how it's going to be changed, and then an explanation of the reason for that change. The ballot language is separate and just goes into detail on the meaning of the change. That's the reason why every two years when we have a constitutional change election, the legislature will come out with a big bill that is going to be added verbatim into the Constitution. But what you see on the ballot is usually a one or two sentence thing. This is a little more detailed than that because we actually say all of the details that people are voting on, unlike the legislature language, which is usually very short and doesn't really get down to the heart of the matter of what you're voting on. The Part A basically is just to come into compliance with current state law, where it requires consent of everybody that lives there in order to be annexed. The law is so strict at this point that the city will likely, if the law stays the same, never annex more property that's not either industrial or a neighborhood that's coming into development and needs city water. And we require annexation to get water or sewer to those sides. But this just brings us into compliance with state law. The next one is change to Article 3, Section 14G, Filling of City Council Vacancies. And that's a relatively long section. It's on the first page of Exhibit A. Basically, there's several phrases that are struck out, and new, a long phrase that's added in. But the summary of that is that our current charter does not comply with state law. And it doesn't comply with state law in a couple of different ways. And so, if this had come up and there was a vacancy on the council, we wouldn't have followed what our charter says, because it's superseded by state law when it comes to that type of replacement of a person. Because our city council terms of office are three years or more, then they're subject to state law. If they were two years, then they would be subject only to what the charter says. Since they are three years, and that's not changing, basically, this change is an amendment to require that any vacancy on council be filled by a special election within a certain time period, 120 days, if more than 12 months remain on the term. And council can appoint, if this law passes, if there's less than 12 months that remain on the term. And so, that's the summary of all those sections that have been struck out. Basically, we're just taking out the part that no longer complies with state law and adding a whole new section that recites a summary of state law on the more than 12 months and less than 12 months. The next one changes Article 1, Section 9. This is imminent domain. There's also, over the past four sessions, there have been a lot of different changes to imminent domain authority. Imminent domain, as we all know, is the power that governments have to take property through a special court proceeding. That law has been shrunk down so that fewer governments have it. Every year, we have to file new imminent domain reports with the controller, or I'm sorry, the Secretary of State, that show why we have that authority and that we are intentionally re-upping that authority. What this change does is just to bring this section into compliance with current state law. And it references the state law in the language for the ballot. It's Chapter 21 of the Property Code. That's where all the recent changes have been. And those sections, if you look at the legislative history about why they made those changes, it was to ensure fair market value compensation, public purpose for the taking, and then a whole lot of different very specific required notices. And rather than put all that in detail in the charter itself, it basically strikes the part that we know wasn't within state the part that we know wasn't within state law, and then adds a sentence that basically says that the city's use of the imminent domain power has to be exercised in accordance with Chapter 21 of the Property Code. We also added another phrase that says, "And any other applicable state laws," just in case they re-codify Chapter 21 into a different location. But that's just to, all that does is make it clear so that we don't have a court fight later on about whether state law trumps local law or vice versa. But as far as imminent domain goes, state law definitely trumps local charter rules. So this just brings it into compliance with that. All right. Section, Proposition D is Article 3, Section 14C, and that relates to terms for the council and mayor. This removes two phrases that read, "Not more than two terms in succession," and including a illegibility section for multiple successive terms. The language on the ballot here would be to remove the limitation on the number of successive terms for the mayor and council that they may serve, but it would keep the three-year term limit. The purpose of this was to move more into the status quo of pretty much every other city like Greenville. It's about the same size and same financial background and serving as the county seat to change the amount of successive terms that are there. Some cities have different rules about the number of years you can serve in a specific term, but most cities of our size in Texas are three- or four-year terms with no limitation on successive terms, so that there's no forcing people to no longer be able to serve right when they finally figure everything out, with all the complicated things that the council deals with. Proposition E changes Article 3, Section 14. And in your paperwork, it actually says Proposition D. That'll be amended when we do the Spanish translation. But this talks about unopposed candidates for office. There's no current provision in our charter, and so this entire section is new. Basically, if, up until this point, if there was only one person running for an office, technically, our charter implied that we still had to have an election, which costs the taxpayers money, even if there's no reason to do it, because there's only one person running. And so, what this does is enshrine in our local law what state law says, which is that we can cancel the election if there's only one person that's eligible to run that actually does run. The final change is proposed for Article 11, Section 119. This is, the title of that is Sale of City-Owned Utilities. And it's a really long section, but at the very end of the current section, or I guess at the very end of the first paragraph of the current section, there's a section that requires the calling of an election to sell a utility or any part of a utility. That's no longer compliant with state law. State law currently says that there's, there's other specific requirements for calling that election. And so, what this does is basically incorporates the state law reference, which is Government Code 1502, and then some very specific sub-chapters of that, rather than all of these old rules that don't apply, which is, you still have to have an election if you're going to sell a utility. But this required 20 days' notice and a newspaper, and requiring that the entire ballot be printed in a specific way. That's no longer what the state law says, and so this basically just incorporates the reference to the state law, and then includes that catch-all phrase, like the first or the second one we looked at, and all other applicable state laws. And so, obviously, there's no plans to sell, or even talk of selling GEUS or any part of it, but if that does happen years from now, whoever's looking at this charter is going to see that they need to follow state law and not accidentally create a problem by following an out-of-date set of rules that would have the long-term effect of causing that election to be void. And so, those are the six proposed propositions for the ballot. If you approve, the way the ordinance is set up, the way that it's written, the only thing left to do, other than to change that reference to Proposition D to Proposition E, would be to translate the rest of this into Spanish and then get that to the elections administrator by the end of the week to set up the ballots for the upcoming May election.
Thank you, Daniel. Are there any questions today? Yeah, I'll just ask, is there any public testimony tonight? Anyone like to speak either in favor or opposition to this, this item 7A? There being no one, what is the pleasure of the council regarding this item?
I move that we approve.
Second. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Item made a consideration action on a resolution expressing intent to reimburse costs from procedural obligations incurred in the future. Summer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. If you recall, during the work session, we went over the water and sewer revenue bonds. So here's the total of Phase 2 that we're asking council, and then Steven Adams, he phased those out for the '26 offering, '27 offering, '28 offering, based on the length of the projects, how long they would take. You guys are well aware that, once we do receive funds, we do need to spend it within three years, so that's why we phased it in that, in that manner. Some of these projects will take a lot longer to design and to construct as well. So what this reimbursement resolution will do is if there's any spending that we need to do prior to receiving the funding in April 23rd, or April 23rd of 2026, that we would be allowed to reimburse ourselves for anything. That could be anything from design and engineering, surveying, anything to get the project shovel-ready or anything like that. If we wanted to push one of these projects to the top, we could do that. Or, you know, like I told you, Phase 2 Water Treatment Plant is ready to be bid. If there's anything we need to do prior to then, then we'd be able to reimburse ourselves. What we did ask for the up-to amount was $52,610,000. So, that's just in case. That's just if we need to reimburse ourselves for any of that. So that's not saying we will spend $52 million between now and April. It's just if we, if we do spend, we'd be able to reimburse ourselves up to that amount. The IRS does require us to have this reimbursement resolution in place in order to reimburse ourselves for anything that we do. So that's all that's asking for tonight.
Any questions for council? Not as a motion regarding this item 8A?
Second.
Please vote. And it passes unanimously. Item may be a consideration action on a resolution authorizing change order number 16 with AP Gulf states in the amount of $77,000. Brett?
Yes, Mayor, council, good evening. So this is Change Order 16, so a few things on that. Is going to be a gas meter relocation, so we did have to move. Originally, we had the gas meter south of the property, and we had a mix-up with Atmos, so we have to move it to the north end of the property there. And then we had some reprogramming of cameras that we had to do, where, basically, we provided the IP addresses for those cameras. They programmed them, and we found that there was a conflict with the IP addresses, and so our IT department had to build a new subnet, and the company had to come back out to reprogram them manually onsite. So, those are some of the things we got done. The good news is, these are dwindling down, hopefully.
And you're still under budget?
Still under budget, yes, sir. So...
Question?
Yes, sir.
What was the bulk of this $77,000? Because surely, it's not just reprogramming a few cameras.
No, the bulk of it's going to be inside that barn door, ceiling cloud, and fixtures.
Okay.
So up in the fitness, up on the fitness deck, we have the fitness room in there. And originally, we had a walk-through design where we would store our fitness equipment, but if you wanted to come in there and host a class, we couldn't secure that equipment. And so, that's probably the bulk of it, is going to be the ceiling clouds and that, those barn doors.
Got you. Okay.
And we do, just, you know, just to kind of reassure you, we do have a consultant, Jeannie, that goes through all our change orders. She negotiates all those fees with them. Some of these, that barn door one was submitted like in, you know, probably early September. And so she'll go back and forth with them based on industry standards and get them worked down on that stuff, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council regarding this item 8B?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Please vote. Item 8C, consideration action on a resolution approving submission of a grant proposal for cybersecurity threat mitigation project affecting public safety communications and technology. Chief?
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I'm here today to ask for a resolution to give us permission to apply for a cybersecurity grant. That's all we're going to do, is apply for it for right now. The grant is administered by the state and local government Cybersecurity Grant Program, which is administered through the Department of Homeland Security, through the officer, Office of the Governor. And what this grant does is, after our last cyber event, we were looking at ways that we can actually harden our infrastructure so that public safety isn't interrupted. And so, Lieutenant Faust started digging for grants, and he found a cybersecurity grant that, should we decide to proceed with this, it would alleviate the cost of the first year by 70%. So we contacted Motorola to find out, you know, all the bells and whistles, the top of the line, what will we need to harden our radio infrastructure and everything else, and they sent us a quote. The quote was for $661,000 over a five-year period. Now, that's with all the bells and whistles, that's not negotiating on what we actually need. We're currently working with IT to see if this is the route that we want to go. The reason why we're here is the grant has a deadline for application of two days from now, and so we have to get the, the grant in to see, you know, if this is the way we want to proceed. It's not saying that we have to accept the grant, it's not saying that we're going to get the grant, but if this is the way that we decide to proceed with IT, at least this would help alleviate the first year cost by 70%. So, we're looking at trying to just set it up to where we're hardening our critical infrastructure and give us that extra layer of protection to mitigate any intrusion or interruption of public services.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Your motion regarding this item 8C?
I make a motion to approve. Seven.
And item 8C passes unanimously. Ask the city secretary to read the consent calendar, please.
City Council meeting minutes from January 27th. Resolution authorizing a contract with SellerX for ACA reporting. Resolution authorizing representatives for JP Morgan Chase, PFM, Texas Range, Texas Term, Texas Fit, Logic, Texas Star, Texas Class, and Texpool. Resolution approving multi-year agreements for the temporary closure of a segment of state right-of-way for Lee Street 4, Hunt County Festival of the Arts, Lee Street Jamboree, and the annual Christmas parade.
Questions?
Looks like E and F are the same thing on here? Is that a typo?
In your packet, the actual resolutions, one is for the Christmas parade.
Okay.
F is the Christmas parade.
Okay. F is Christmas parade. Thanks.
Summer, could you just briefly describe what we're doing, what we're doing again with item 9?
For 9C? So that's just allowing our finance director, Mr. Ben Petty, to be a signer and an authorized user on all of those accounts, which is standard. He's the main user of those accounts, I'm secondary, and then we also have the city secretary on there as well as a third user, to be able to use it as a backup. So that's just authorizing him. Right now, it's currently just myself and the city secretary. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions regarding these items? And I assume with item F amended, is there a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
And the consent calendar passes unanimously. City staff, city council reports, you have a first-quarter report for Keep Greenville Beautiful. Item 11, are there any discussion or proposed agenda items? Like to bring forward. If not, there are no boards and commission meetings, and we'll be going back into executive session. We anticipate a vote coming out of executive session. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.